I've never been.
Me. Maybe some people get those.
Really hard to power.
I am. Okay. I'm not ready yet.
We'll call this made order. Call it order. Patrick, here.
Dolly, here.
Dolly, here. Russell.
Here.
Order. Agenda approval, consent agenda approvals of events of four fourteen two thousand twenty five and joint meeting four fourteen two thousand twenty five and special meetings four twenty four two thousand twenty five and special meeting four twenty eight two thousand twenty five. Approval of financial statements as of four thirty two thousand twenty five. Approval of bills as presented. And we got three approval liquor license. So.
Second.
Second. How do you vote? Patrick?
Yes.
Kalba?
Yes.
Dolly?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Okay. The air transfer station and town cleanup off cup.
I'm here to ask for some support from the council after coming off of the largest town cleanup we had. This was the seventh in eight years. Uh, and with Dick and I and Molly Dolce and the FFA people, the last five of those cleanups. It was very successful. We got great feedback. Dick's got the numbers passed out to you guys. But I got, we had to ask, if you recall, for special privilege to open up Saturday for us. And we need this to happen the last weekend of April because it can't happen if the FFA kids and Molly are not involved. And that need fits with their schedule because they have their banquet. She's got everything consolated over one weekend. And they did it last year, but word come back to me at the end of this, and it wasn't from board, it was just from a manager, that they really think you should work into their schedule if you first weekend of May. Dick and I spoke with one of the board members and we're on the agenda, the twenty first, for the transfer station board meeting to request that they be open next April twenty fifth, Saturday morning for us because it fits our needs. We're either largest or second largest contributor to that organization. And we feel that, and the board member we talked to didn't seem like that'd be a big hurdle. So I'm, I'm here for a couple of reasons. One, I'd like support from this council in the simple form of a letter with one sentence. Say, we request that you support the Stewart Town Cleanup by being open April twenty fifth in the morning to support the needs for Stewart, Iowa. It's that simple. We're not, we're not, they've changed their hours. Services have changed, rates have changed. We're not asking to change the whole thing, but it will work for us, the people leading this, the last weekend of April. And all I got is a big stretch to ask for council support and just a one or two sentence letter to take down there with us. We're going with twenty first. And I think Molly's gonna be at that meeting as well. She was the one that said, we need to negotiate this uh, uh, before we ac- accept going to May. For them.
Can you correct me on that? The first or second year they did in the summer, it was just.
Two years, I mean, three years.
Out of the eighty.
We got that.
So it's great to have it during school and then once you hit the month of May, when they talk about opening and stuff, you just run into, um, you know, seniors are getting to the end, they're leaving, the FFA banquet, like it just may get so chaotic. I think that's another big reason that works so well with having those guys there. They do such a great job of helping, so.
So do we, uh, do we just need a motion that we go be in favor of our letter being written?
Yep.
To go that?
Yep.
I, I would make that motion that we have, uh, you and Sarah draft a letter, uh, support for them for April twenty first, or no, May.
April fifteenth.
April twenty fifth, twenty fifth, uh, twenty twenty six. I'll second that.
Second. Okay, so Patrick?
Yes.
Kalba?
Yes.
Dolly?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
All right, two other things, a little bit quick because I know you got a big agenda. Last year I spoke about the need that every new council should learn about the commitment this community has to that transfer station. It's a financial commitment. And we've had nobody on the board for a lot of years representing Stewart. We should have. We're an awful big entity. I believe you had asked for a presentation last fall to the council, then that being dog and pony show, just what is the legalities of Stewart's commitment there? Because there is a debt down there and there is some that I believe on Stewart's backs. So I think every new council, it changes all the time. God bless you folks who serve, but some of you is gonna get tired someday. Be new people and, and they should know that when they come in. They should learn that. And the second thing is, if you learn that, I think there will be more momentum to seek representation, whether it's the new mayor next year, maybe wants to take that on. But this town should have a representative on that board.
And I think Sarah or Ash, one of you guys had sent me the agreement uh, for that transfer station and there is, there is a financial commitment.
Yeah, and I think we're, are we, we have to send all of our trash from this town to there.
Yeah.
We can't go straight to here.
No.
No, it's not available. We're locked in.
If, if you want to quit that, there's a financial cost.
Yeah, there's a buyer.
You can't just.
It's just kind of a strange.
But it's going to, and, and did you send that just to me, Sarah, or did you send it everywhere? Do you remember?
I believe I sent it to everyone.
Okay, so.
Well.
I did take a look at it, but it's been a while.
I think review it and maybe how can Stewart be represented on that board? Decisions being made, the cost per ton, the hours of operation, blah, blah, blah. And this community may be the biggest community in this pool in a few years. But we had great feedback from them. We serve people all over the city. A lot of people in the new area, we got positive feedback. We went to residences, twenty six or more senior residences we picked up. And it was a big win for the community, so I appreciate the support from the council.
That's fun. I just want to add a couple of things. This year we did take twenty point five three tons of garbage out compared to fourteen point four two tons of garbage last year. The metal was nine point two tons and last year was four point two three tons. So we got a lot of material out of the town. I want to thank Cory and Jim for their effort. Jim smashed the metal on the transition. We didn't have to use near the dumpsters if he would have been smashing.
And, and the FFA has been singled out. It doesn't work without them. Molly took the biggest load of appliances ever out of this town. We had decided we couldn't take another one. Thankfully, it hit three o'clock and, but it was a big load, twenty five hundred pounds of electronics went out. Uh, the biggest amount of metal. It was great. Thank you very much.
Okay, by West Central Valley High School fundraiser. Yes.
Hi, I just found out that I have to do this. I'm Renee Pepper. I'm the Spanish teacher. And I was told I needed to get your permission to, um, pick a weekend for the four quarters for us to try to raise some donations for our trip to Costa Rica. I already spoke to Jim. I already spoke to Dave. They both came there. Okay?
He's a motion. I'll second.
Andrew?
I'll second.
Second. How do you vote, Patrick?
Yes.
Kalba?
Yes.
Dolly?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, Men America, one of our long time clients. The ABC all the way through four.
Um, we'll see. See what the council wants to do. Forest Alder's, we're being strength camp. And also this evening Marty Dostelik is here representing, um, the American Energy. And can he answer some questions as well? He's a civil engineering consultant. Uh, so this is for a, um, project that is looking to be on the west end of South Seventh. Out by Wausau, just west of the helipad. So that's where this would go. I think, uh, this project for when built, this would be thirty to thirty-five jobs, something like that. Uh, so it's a pretty important project for the community. And so before you is a final plat. They're dividing this up into two, uh, parcels. And, uh, we didn't have any issues with that. We recommend acceptance of the final plat. They are asking for two waivers. One waiver is, uh, a sidewalk along South Seventh. So I can let Marty talk a little bit about why they're requesting that waiver. And then the second one is a waiver from, uh, not long bar wire at the top of their chain link fence around their storage area behind the building. So I can let Marty talk about those as well. Uh, then there's also a site plan with this. Uh, the building is in there, what it's going to look like. It'll be a metal building, but it has a re- obstacle on the front, uh, of it that would meet our standards. And, uh, review the site plan and don't have any issues with that. Recommend acceptance. They are looking to run a sanitary sewer out to this, uh, site for a sewer service. They're looking into the sanitary sewer at the intersection of South Seventh and Adair. Running it along the north side of South Seventh. Uh, there's a water main in there, so to stay away from the water main, they're actually moving it north of the right of way line, which is city pro- home property between the Men American site and Adair. That's where the helipad is. And so part of this is, sounds weird, but you're giving yourself an easement. Um, and the reason for that is so that easement can be recorded, so at any time, fifty years from now, the city sells that property or does something different with it. No one's trying to remember that there's a sewer there that they're reporting easement, um, along with that property.
Is that, is that gonna be open cut or is that gonna be bored?
That would be open cut.
Is it gonna affect the helipad out there?
Yes, it will. And so I know Marty talked to his conversations he's had with Sean about, about that.
Is there any? Um, like with the utilities, I don't know if you've run this with them, like, do we have a capacity as far as electrical and everything out there? Are we sitting okay with any of those capacities? Just for, I don't, I don't know the actual s- size or significance of this or what that will, I just didn't know what.
That's probably out of our service area.
Oh.
That's probably gonna be REC's for the electric, yes.
It's an O A. It's an O A.
It is?
Yeah.
Oh, it's ours. I mean, we just talked about, sorry, that long ago when we were talking about we need to, we got that big project worth it while we're mending.
Well, the utilities, you know, with their thing about the substation.
Right.
That's what he's getting at. Is there any concern that?
I, I've been copying Pat on all of this. I've not heard anything from him with any issues. I mean, it's, it's just normal office usage, uh, like maybe.
Four hundred days.
Okay.
So, and sewer, you know, it's just bathrooms.
Okay.
So I'll let maybe Marty answer some of those questions about the waivers and the hell.
Thanks, Forrest.
Thank you, Forrest. Mr. Mayor and members of council, uh, thank you for hearing us tonight on this. Um, mainly here to answer any questions you may have on this. Uh, first off, uh, the final plat, uh, there's two lots, one's five acres, one's slightly less than five acres. Uh, Men American is building, it's an operations and maintenance building on West Hurley, the two lots. Uh, they have an option, their first rate of refusal on the second lot if someday they want to expand their, uh, storage area. Uh, the building they're putting in is about eleven thousand square feet, sixty-five by a hundred and seventy feet. Uh, north of the building will be a fenced in area. Uh, we have a, uh, chain link fence, eight foot high chain link fence with, and we're requesting a waiver for one foot barbed wire on top of that. Uh, the fenced in area is going to be a storage area for wind turbine equipment. Uh, so it'll be a lot of mechanical stuff, a lot of copper wire, which is pretty high on the theft rankings right now, so that's why we're requesting the variance for, or the waiver, excuse me, for the barbed wire on top of that. Um, as far as the sidewalk goes, uh, we're requesting waivers for that as well. Uh, right now there is a rural cross section there, so there's a slight road ditch, if you can call it that. And the closest sidewalk is about seven hundred feet away. Uh, if at such time the right of ways improved and sidewalks are extended, Men American could, uh, would install the sidewalk at that time. Uh, the sanitary sewer, uh, as mentioned, that does cut through the helipad driveway. Uh, we talked with the manager of, or Sean with, uh, Stewart Rescue. And he's agreed to, uh, for the period of time, we estimate a few days for that, for the construction, they would find an alternate landing site for any medic rescue helicopters. Um, soon as we have a better timeframe, we will work with them to get that set up. And beyond that, uh, want to answer any questions you may have. Uh, I also have Tracy and Janet from Men American here. Uh, can answer questions.
Marty, is, uh, barbed wire or just barbed wire or is it gonna be electrified?
It's just barbed wire. Yep. Yeah, ti- typical, uh, eight footer fabric that like forty-five degree arm that comes out with three strings of barbed wire on.
Did we have another contract that requested that?
The.
What's it?
Also facility and theirs are electrified.
Right. But do they have barbed wire? Did they, because I knew they put that electric part on the inside. And I thought they went, do they still do with barbed wire?
I never got a number.
Yeah, it's just a number.
Yeah, we have two arms on top of her.
They did do arm on top, okay.
On the outside of the fence.
Yes.
Yeah, and on the inside there was a.
The electric part.
Yeah.
So when this, when this was discussed, the planning and zoning that came up too, and there was another project that they mentioned that it did have barbed wire.
What's the hours of, of business? Is this gonna be, is there gonna be personnel there twenty-four hours a day or just?
Uh, basically from seven AM to four PM, five PM, something like that.
Unless there's emergency.
Unless, yep. There, there would be service trucks, uh, there'd be number of service trucks, there, there are staff there, uh, morning that come in, go out onto the, in wind farms, do their maintenance, come back again.
I probably missed this. How many drops are you anticipating?
Uh, thirty to thirty-five.
And what kind of wages do you think they're bringing in?
Wind deck will make anywhere from twenty-five to forty dollars an hour, depending on how skilled they are.
Do you anticipate a lot of semi-traffic going back and forth between there or more just service vehicle type?
Mostly service vehicles. There'd be occasional semi-trucks bringing equipment in or out, but it's not gonna be a constant. The co-op next door barely have, uh, more semi-traffic.
So, and, you know, I'm not opposed to that. I like what you said about the sidewalk. If at some time, you know, it improves, you put it in. Does that need to, and forgive me, my ignorance, because I don't know, I'm not a lawyer, does that need to be written down in a, in something or do we just, you know?
No, this would be a legal document, just like we did with the start. They just reported.
Okay, all right.
And that would be.
That was what?
The part, what?
About the sidewalk.
Sidewalk.
So he said, okay, so.
Essentially, if the neighbors, if we improve that ditch and the neighbors continue to sidewalk all the way, that.
Yeah, the only contingent really is that the city of Stewart requires it to be done. It doesn't matter why. And then they have some need to get that accomplished.
Okay.
It's not contingent on curbs being put in or, or anything. It's just the city of Stewart now wants the sidewalk put in. So then it's, for their expense.
All right, I, thanks, Forrest.
You need a motion on.
Need a single one. A through F, pre-results.
I'll make that motion that we approve A through F, um, or worse, given K's recommendation.
Yeah, I'll second.
Second. How do you vote, Patrick?
Yes.
Kalba?
Yes.
Dolly?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Thank you, Marty.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. And then you just need the city attorney to say, attorney, you're correct to, um, provide that sidewalk.
Side now.
Thanks.
Okay, seven. Hello, Hanson, you better.
Hi, Hanson.
Hi.
He's, uh, with World Licker.
Uh, it was brought to my attention that, uh, the Old Blue Valley location is gonna be painted. That is a area that's in the downtown business district, which has some governance from the historic commission. World Licker asked me on the P and Z board meeting and I was able to get on that meeting, but, uh, they were unable to make a decision. They did not come to a decision, so by their not making a decision, the matter comes to the city council. And they were requesting permission to paint their building.
Well, I think it needs to go through, um, historic preservation.
Yeah.
So, yeah, uh, check of one sixty-eight. Uh, number sixteen. If the planning and zoning commission or the Stewart historic preservation commission does not approve or colors submitted, the applicant may appeal the decision to the city council.
So did P and Z?
They.
I was gonna say, they didn't, they didn't do nothing, so they didn't approve or disapprove of any kind of trust.
They just, their decision was to not make a decision. So, uh, I'd like to, Hanson, go ahead and tell me a little bit about World Licker and some of their plans and what they got planned for the building.
So it's, uh, the black on the building is kind of a color scheme. It's, we have it in multiple locations in multiple towns. Um, in our experience, it brings up the color of the building, makes it stand out. Um, and obviously it's not a structural change to the building. It's just a, you know, pink cover, which could be painted again, you put it to a, but a brighter color, I think, would just make the building stand out a little more. For us, um, like I said, it's been part of our model to have black buildings or gray buildings. This is for better, so we like to keep it that way. Obviously, we didn't know, we had to ask for permission, so I'm here present because I wanna make sure we go through the proper channels, um, and do things the right way.
Uh, what would you add in your, about what your plans are for the building?
Yeah, so currently we like to establish two going things. Um, we are World to Golf, which is our name of our gas stations, which carry crispy crunch chicken. We are World Licker, which is our convenience stores, uh, liquor stores. And then obviously we're also trying to now turn into World Golf, which is a golf simulator place that we would like to bring to one third of the building. Um, another version of the building would be a convenience store. And then I think there, there would be either storage or offices, person offices. But that's kind of what we're trying to do into the town. World Golf is, as you guys know, golf simulators have become very popular. Um, with that, maybe that was something that's enjoyable for all ages and most skills. And we'd like to set that up. And then a convenience store situated in the convenience store, obviously has liquor, beer, tobacco, but it has groceries items. It has some automotive, you know, some house, some snacks, some food. Um, that's kind of what we also like to.
What would your hours be?
Uh, it's always dependent. Um, normally we try to shoot for like a nine to ten, maybe twelve on the weekend. But it's relatively based on demand. So, you know, if people want to open earlier, we're always open to changing those hours. Uh, we have stores, uh, open at nine, we have stores open at six, we have stores that close at ten, we have stores that close at two. So it's just very, um, about the time we like or.
How many floors?
That would also vary, uh.
Business.
On the business. Obviously, it depends. Um, we have employees that are on part-time, uh, we have people that are full-time. We just kind of make a work based on that. If it's obviously more full-time employees, you have those, although if it's more part-time, you can have more people. Again, based on the demand.
So you mentioned this could be a black or a gray color. I mean, how many have chosen the gray color before and how?
Uh, so our buildings have a little, a little of both. Uh, our idea for it was black.
Okay.
Kind of that was our intention. But obviously if you guys are open to a different color, you know, I, we are open to suggestions too.
I just, well, I know that I believe it was brought to the city council's attention a while back and have another building downtown, uh, painted black.
And with doing so, we went totally against our ordinance. And I'm speaking on this because I do believe I'm gonna motion on that. So I'm gonna kick my own self in the shins and we totally went against the ordinance. And kind of undermined what P and Z and the historical preservation, um, kind of advised us not to. Um, so here we are again. Um, I, I think in my opinion, we need to either change the ordinance or stick by it. And we have yet to do either so far.
Can you tell me how we went against the ordinance?
Well, it was because of the, the brick color.
But our ordinance says, and I'm sorry to cut you off.
No, you're fine.
It does say that they can appeal to us.
Mm-hmm.
So we're, we're not necessarily going against them, you know, we, we didn't follow the recommendation. We followed the ordinance because they appealed it.
Yeah.
So we're within the ordinance to do that. Um.
And it's one.
No, you're fine. Go ahead.
And it's one of the deals where, you know, what are these committees for? I mean, if we have these, if we have P and Z and the historical preservation and, you know, it's, it's kind of like seed as well, you know, we, we take their recommendations. And if we're not going to, that's fine. But we just need to be consistent with it. I, I guess that's where I'm at. Um, and if we're not going to use the recommendations, why are those committees formed? Why are those people on those same committees, I guess? That's just my two cents. I'm just throwing that out there for discussion.
No, that's all right. That's, that's, that's perfectly fine. And recommendations are great and sometimes, you know, there's maybe a different, different way to go. It's like, you know, when you go to a doctor, they may recommend something else. When you go to another one, they recommend something else. Like you just follow the first doctor's recommendation. You, you say that you discuss it, you try to figure out what's best for the whole city, uh, on there. But I get where you're going on that, you know, because I think for the general part, we, we tend to follow recommendations, uh, more often than not. Um, I know, uh, the hornet says it's, it's supposed to complement the dwelling next to us, so that's.
Be the daycare, which is like a dark tan brown. And then I know, oh, I'm gonna get this wrong because they've changed names, but the feed store, I know they just dumped, I couldn't imagine how much money into all that siding.
Yeah, that's kind of a dark gray, isn't it? Or kind of a real dark gray.
With red accent.
Yeah.
And they just, again, if you're honest, they purchased the Miller building. I don't know what the plan is with that. I, that was a white.
Hmm.
Is that right?
Yeah, it's like a creepy color, so.
Yeah. Colors, storage, living, storage.
So, Ray? So now we got.
The old giver shop.
Oh, across the street.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, uh.
I think that's a bunch of tan color.
Jim here, you know, you know what, you know what color Morrison's, old Morrison's is?
It's a great.
It's a green color. So you got a cream pan and then gray over there.
Yeah, it makes it big.
So it's punch, punch begin with, you know? Um, are there any other colors in, in your mind besides the black?
Uh, we were open to suggestions if, uh, we were just thinking, uh, fresh.
Uh, we were open to suggestions if, we were just thinking fresh propane would make it stand out. If you guys had different suggestions and different colors, we were also open to that. That's just kind of our pattern, so we obviously would make that offer first. But if there is something else that you guys would approve of, we will be open to different colors if that were.
Matt, what are your thoughts? You're the techno developing guy.
Me personally, I'm not a fan of painting everything black, but from the marketing standpoint and wanting to stand out, I understand it. So, I maybe compromise, maybe just doing the front black and maybe leaving the side neutral color maybe. I don't know if that would be an idea.
But just a fresh code of what you, the colors that you got.
Those colors are kind of, well, you guys have business, pretty much, you know, but those are kind of trade more colors. And that's where they're going with their white link and the black.
Yeah, I mean.
Just about being fair.
And maybe the red could be a different color or something like that, but I don't know. Just discussion.
Do you need something tonight? Is this?
Well, we stopped them from painting.
So they were, you had the paint brushes out?
I think we already had the paint and everything, but obviously, you guys still know. You know, it's, it's what it is. At that point, but we did have everything ready.
So you have already got everything purchased and ready to go.
We didn't know that, you know, that's okay. We're learning as we go, so.
So, and what other locations do you have here in Iowa?
Uh, this would be our tenth and eleventh, that we own ourselves and then a few that are rented out. So, we're working on another one as well. Nice, we are in a lot of smaller communities in a lot of different towns. Abell has one, New York has two.
Where is it located, Abell?
The D O T, actually. That's actually, yeah, that got remodeled. It's really nice now, I want you guys to review it too, though. That's where they're, one for Dallas, Boone, Ames, up to Cherokee, which is probably a further south.
Yeah, Blue One in Abell, though, has a lot of brick, or is that all?
It does.
But it is left alone.
Okay, sure, sure.
We are going to.
How about black and white?
Black and white? Like you want the side to be white or?
Yeah, black and white.
Like stripes? That would make it stand out.
That would stand out.
We can play with black and whites, it's easy.
I mean, yeah, maybe, I don't know, like a black storefront and white. South, yeah, some.
No, the white. I'm not black, play with black and white.
Something like that. You know, I'm kind of fine with that because I hate to hamper based on color, you know. That's just, you know, but I understand, you know, because we're trying to keep that historical value changed. Is that alright?
No, I kind of, I hate to run a hamster, I mean, depending on what their colors can be.
It almost says, it just says they got to complement the building, so, you know, somebody, one man's compliment is another man's, you know.
Whatever.
Yes.
They'll buy it, whatever, yeah, you know, so.
But I think we can compromise it, we can make black and white work. So we work on the black theme on the front, and like you said, we keep the side white.
You the motion?
There?
Can I ask the question of this fine young gentleman?
Yeah.
Um, along with what you mentioned that you're going to sell, will you also have tobacco and vaping items?
We do have, uh, it's also based on the stores, for example. Some stores have certain items, the town people ask for it, and some does not. It's ever-changing, the, whatever we originally start with, it's not permanent because you get customers, people request certain things, they want certain things there, and you change it based on demand. So you can introduce a certain item, and then say that item doesn't sell, then the item gets removed, something new gets put in. It's never just been.
Like fluid? It's like fluid? I was just concerned about.
Can we, can we come back to the actual point, which is the color, you know?
Thank you, that's fine.
We discussed maybe outside, you know, but we're here to discuss the color and not get, just like that, um, what they do, you know, all that right now. Black and white, you good with that?
We're good with black and white.
I don't know of any of my other council members. I'm great to hear that. I'll make a motion to do that, and then we'll see what everybody says.
What are your thoughts on that?
Black and white?
Yeah.
I like black and white. I wear a lot of black myself. Black and white goes well together.
Like a, like a black complements a thousand different shades of white.
Exactly. That's what you're doing.
I'm torn because I mean, we've done things and been approved for what we wanted to do, so I have a hard time. I don't do what you want to do, so I don't know. That's. So make a motion to that.
Make a motion.
Well, you have.
It's, it's, there's no second, it's done this far, so I'm concerned, there's no second. I threw it out there. Want to make a motion to letting just paint it black? I'll make a motion to letting it black. I'll tape that on my shoulder as the original color submitted.
Okay. A couple?
Because there's no, I mean, there's no final say, like, if you come back and paint it black and gray stripes with white in here and there, and, I mean, all sorts of things, I mean, what's our process with that? You know what I mean? Like, he comes and paints it bright orange, what do we do about it?
Are we?
Paints it black, what's the deal?
Come back to you guys for that as a.
I honestly don't know.
We have a new motion to have it painted black.
He's got the pink tonight.
I do have the picture ready, buddy.
So, we have a second for that, you get it done, you got another business open up on Main Street there, and, you know.
I'll second that.
Okay, how do you vote?
No.
Cabal?
Yes.
Dolly?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys, appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Stewart, Quater, Senator Shell?
Good evening, Mayor Council. Um, so this is coming back to what we spoke about a few weeks ago regarding increasing outages to my pool staff. I gave you an updated with numbers sheet. As of right now, if we were to stay with what the wage increase would be for the 2025 season, you'll see that on the left-hand side. My first year starts out at eleven, goes up to my fourth year at $12.32, like I said before. Greenfield starts out at $12.50, so we kind of ended that meeting where we thought we were going to start at that point of $12.32. I just did a, what I thought was a fair breakdown, and you can see the increases from there. So, my proposal for first-year lifeguards, starting out at $12.50, I have nine first-year lifeguards. My second year returning, I have eight, and my third year I have one. Fourth year, I have three, with one of those that will be leaving at the end of June due to military obligation. We didn't agree, or however I want to put it, with the pool house getting a raise as well, but I did propose that out there for you guys as well. So, I guess these are the numbers that I came up with without anybody having any sort of input from me leaving. So I don't know where you guys want to go from this point, but that's what I have for you.
Did you visit with age with these numbers?
I did. I sent them within a day or two of the meeting to Sarah and Jim, and I never heard anything from anybody.
So, doable?
I put in the back, it reviewed numbers based on the first presentation, and this one would not be that far from it, so we're talking about in eleven thousand dollar increase. Which I think is okay, I don't see a problem with that.
I know this, and the only reason, this has nothing to do with anything the city's doing or you're doing, but you know, it's more of the state's doing, where they're, you know, our financial advisor just sat up here a couple meetings ago and told us kind of situation we're in. However, I do understand the need for something like this, you know, to keep people, to keep people working there and have it open.
Because I think.
I, I think if we don't see some sort of increase, we won't see the staff. Just because I have so many, I have, my third year, for example, only wants to work two days a week, and I'm losing that experience because they can go out to Quickstar, where he is currently employed, and make sixteen bucks an hour. So, I need some sort of compromise there to where I can keep my staff and keep my experience, or else I won't be able to offer the swim lessons and the private swim lessons and all that sort of stuff. We won't have that sort of program to offer to our citizens.
And so the council realizes too on the profit and loss on this, you go from twenty-three thousand to forty thousand to seventy-seven, that's a lot of maintenance issues.
That is, that is a lot.
Full maintenance.
That is a lot of the maintenance.
Because you say that, that's why it's hard to buy. And just if I can throw something in there, keep in mind, that pool is now fifteen years old, and the maintenance is only going to continue to increase.
We just had to get a part due to, when I came in inspected, that was kind of a thing to us, and that was, you know, another substantial.
How many, did you say applied this year? Didn't you say eleven new kids were coming on or applying?
Those, I have, the numbers on the right-hand side are like the exact numbers with my applications that I have. So you're looking at nine brand-new lifeguards that I will be getting this year.
So, so nine of those, you hired nine of those, correct? How many apps did you have?
My lifeguard applications are twenty, like, I take all the lifeguards I can get just because I know that towards the end of the year, with all the other commitments and everything, the summer gets to be long for them, and they choose not to want to work as much, so. I always start out heavy on the lifeguard side, and by the end of it, we're down to the same people that are working every single day.
Not to the labor, and I think I heard Ash over there tentatively saying, you think it'll be okay?
It'll be okay, it's seasonal work.
Okay.
You can squeeze it, that's up.
So this is, this one is your, is your list, right? Thirteen fifty for the four.
This is mine.
Thirteen twenty-five.
Yes, and then I gave you the breakdown of each.
Okay. I just want to know what we're going to be paying. I'll make that motion.
All right.
Who's second?
I don't know.
I'll second.
Which one? I just want to make sure.
These are, these mirror each other. This is line by line, the individual and how much they're going to be making, and this is the one that I gave you tonight with this.
Right, right, one just has some names.
Yeah, yeah, I just broke it down with everybody's names and what they would be making hourly. I sure will. I was gonna give you everything, I have a stat for you.
Good deal. So how do you vote, Capable? You know. Cabal?
Yes.
Dolly?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Got a court question. When the kids signed up for swim lessons?
Yes.
There's any way to improve that process? I've heard people say.
Um, unless it, if we can get IT in here and get it automated and online, um, there you go. But, I mean, I think this year was way better than last year. Like, we did, I think there's a lot of issues because we're doing it on a soccer Saturday, where I think that's a lot of the grumblings that you heard, because I even heard it myself, was, you know, it's habits to get at the same time. Really, there is no good times.
Okay. Thanks, Ash.
Thank you.
Nine, the Charisian Associate of Conservation. You get what you paid yourself?
Yeah, we did, what someone asked you, he asked you, the same thing as you, you feel like giving yourself.
And, and, and just because you say you think it's okay, and that's fine, I think just as a council, you know, with what you learned that's coming down from the state, is we really need to be mindful of some of the stuff that always comes up and maybe start asking ourselves, is this the best practice? Not just this, but with other items too, you know, and really getting ahead of this because there could be some big changes. That's, I mean, it's not our fault, but, you know, we're gonna have, we're gonna be the ones answering tough questions. So, I don't mind, I'll make the motion for the thousand just because that's the way we've always done it. You know, I don't, I don't like doing that, that same, but, you know, I know we've done it in the past. But then hopefully, you know, as a whole, we can start saying, maybe asking those questions, hey, you know, can we do this, should we be doing this?
And we still don't know on that, which is the terrible part, is.
See, that's just.
I thought that would be kind of settled by now, and we'd have a grasp on that.
No, until, hey, Lucy's week.
Oh boy.
Yeah. I don't know, I can't.
It was supposed to be done the end of last month.
Two weeks.
Yeah, and they.
So, do you have a second?
Who's got Cabal?
I'll, I'll second this.
Okay, second, how do you vote, Capable? Yes. Cabal? Yes. Dolly?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Okay, ten, housing development laws, retention pond. Oh, after this one, after this one. Okay, after this one. Well, currently, the lot, the retention pond is an issue, is the one attached to lot thirty-three. After talking to a couple guys, that just has a fescue blend in it, my thought is, and I understand that that one's been set in quite a while, undeveloped, so my thought would be maybe to separate that one off, leave it seated as it is, mow it as needed, but it's not going to be, you know, a lawn by any means, but mow it as needed. The other three are already, correct me if I'm wrong, for us, but those other three are already included in the plat with those three lots to the north. With those three lots to the north on the new development and also lot one. Are included in the. In the plat or in the deed with that property, correct?
Yes, so the, the southeast one is included with the lot to the west of it. And the north one is equally divided or maybe not included divided into three lots.
So my thought is maybe. Set a timeline. But in talking to several people, that may be attractive for some people with that extra property back there, but set a timeline. If, you know, those lots are setting after X amount of time.
Years.
Yeah, yeah, set a timeline.
Sure.
Cut them off. And because you can, you can seed those with, it's almost like a basin mix, it's listed in Suda Specs. But the seed is like twelve hundred dollars an acre. That's just the seed. That's not seed, that's just the product. Fescue is about four hundred dollars an acre for the seed. But I can see, I can see us maintaining that basin off of lot thirty-three. I don't know how you want to do that because the house to the south of that owns part of that basin. But I mean, we can maintain the rest of it. You know, on an as needed basis.
Those ones in the new division? If we got to that timeframe where they didn't do. What would you say we did as far as fence them off, forget about them, get an appeasement to them?
Well, you'd have to have an easement if you're going to maintain them. Um, you'd have to have an easement for access, but. I'd lock those, forests lock those, I don't know what you're going to maintain and what is a thing.
That's a.
They're steep.
Is there any way we?
My thought is to let them grow up and burn them off once a year. You'd have to catch them, you know, weather conditions just right, but I, that would be my recommendation would be to burn them off.
I just didn't know how that looked if you're a home buyer. Yeah, you don't own that. It's just in eyesore, is there gonna be, uh, would we put up a fence? For a property line and they just mow up to a certain, I mean, I just don't know how that would look. I'm all for it, but I just don't know how that would look if you were buying that lot, like, oh, we have this. Retention pond back there, but it's not yours. I just don't know how. Does that make sense at all?
Yeah, well, yeah, it makes sense. I don't know what the answer.
Yeah, I, I almost think most people wouldn't care that it's not.
Cause there's a, I'm just, there's a barbed wire fence. On part of the property already, right on the other side of the pond.
Yeah.
On, it's on a property line.
Yes, the current property line.
Yes.
Yes.
Would we, would anybody ever come back and say, well, I built a fence? To completely separate that whole pond?
Oh, if you separated them off and, and sold it without.
Yes, I like Jim's idea and then that's a, something you. Look at two, three years from now when they don't sell and, and that council decided on that point.
I'm just kind of wondering what kind of timeframe are you, are we looking at, you know?
How long's this one sat? How many years has it been?
Well, see, I've been, he's been on the director for four years. And it's been before that.
It's been says before.
Well, four year maintenance bond was up last year, so. So it's been five years.
Wouldn't we want to just make it kind of like on a yearly thing to see whether any progress is, you know, instead of saying, well, after. Two years, we're just going to chop them up and go, hey, this year we can look at, see are we any closer? You know, do we want to give it, at least we want to do it yearly? Until, and then, I mean, it's going to be like we're doing right now, you know, we've gone four years. We're on the verge of probably cutting this off, which is fine with me if it gets, if it's going to get it moving. All right, and get a house still on, you know, we just go kind of a year to year to see how it, how it goes, I mean.
Is it an issue? If we do it this way, if one of the three lots goes?
Yeah, that might be a lot of rough waters and if one of them goes.
Say that middle one or whatever.
I want you to say middle.
The middle one has the majority of the.
I love mowing edges on it, yeah. I don't know, that's just, yeah.
I mean, yeah, we, we're never getting predicted, so, and with any accuracy on who goes in there.
But I mean, if you set a timeline, you know, or a every year.
Yeah, just every year to you and kind of get a feeling, you know, maybe, you know.
Some people that may be an attraction too, some may not.
Yeah, you never know. So going back to, kind of switching gears, going back to this lot thirty-three, are, are you thinking, Jim, that's something that. The city would do or are we just contracting? You take care of it.
We're, we're out there anyway. It wouldn't be mowed on a weekly basis like the parks and anything else, I mean, it would be maintained, but not on a, not on a weekly basis.
It's a little rough down in there, it's. So if that other, if that other house that owns that, if they wanted to give it up, they could, I imagine.
I don't know how that works for us, I mean.
They can just, okay, if they just, well, the city's maintaining the back half of it, they're just making the whole thing, so it's a possibility. Okay, that's all I'm saying is, you know, we got to realize that can be a possibility that could come up, so if you're maintaining this, blah, 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 it can all. And that could work, so, but.
Yeah, it'll just be, I mean, the legal part of separating that off and just breaking that down to one lot.
I like that, I do that.
Will you have motions with it?
Yeah, yeah.
So I, correct me if I'm wrong here, I don't know if we're on the same page, but the motion would be to separate thirty-three, the pond off of it. However, that might look. And then go on a yearly basis to see if we need to do the same for the new development. The three lots. I'll second that.
Move a second. How do you go, Patrick?
Yes.
Oh, Dolly, yes. Russell.
Yes.
Okay, we've got to take a two minute break.
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, we're going to go to eleven, maintenance plot of the street. At this time, I want public records director. To give his recommendation, the council's all been, they have to look at this property and. Hopefully after Jim talks, we can make a motion. There's been a lot of discussion, but as I stated before, I guess my recommendation would be that we continue to maintain. That property, just like we do the rest of the city properties, same mowing and trimming schedule, mowed it, trim every other time we mow. As for the trees, remove the trees that are dead. And then maintain the trees as needed. We don't make it a habit to cut and town live trees, I mean, we've had enough dead trees to maintain.
Is there dead trees up there now?
Yes, there is, there is, yep, there's a, there's a couple of ash up there, they're dead.
Probably pick up some of the limbs and stuff.
Yep, yep.
Uh, out of there and then get it on a maintenance schedule.
Yep.
I, I think, you know, I. I, I think the council did, they're getting the overtures and going up and looking at this, and both property owners, myself trying to come to a. An amicable agreement, uh, I think this is going to be the best one, you know, I, I had my thoughts on it. But I think this is probably the best thing moving forward and then you can just, this is it, if there's any other discussion, it just needs to come through. Ash, he can handle, I don't think it needs to come up to the council again. On this, that would be my thought, you know, get it cleared up. So, um, yeah, I'm doing the motion.
Yes, real quick before the motion's made, I mean, I guess my question is, I'm sure no point about this, I mean, looking at what we've already. Given away on some of these vacated streets, I mean, what is the true, what does this council or any future council see as a use for that property before except for. A maintenance thing on our side? I mean, that's my question.
I, I'm similar to that in the sense that. I think that Mr. Irving expressed his desire to purchase or would be to the property next to him. But I think the major issue would be the property next to Mr. James because of the sewer lines.
There's also a, uh. Internet and stuff running down that property too. It comes down to where the alley is going east. To west between me and Mr. Irving's and goes over to actually the house next to me. So there, you know, on my end, there is wiring and stuff, so anybody with any brains would not want to own that piece of land.
Well, and that's another one that we're on because. If, if you wanted to purchase that property and Mr. Irving wanted to go next to him and it's a simple deal, but I don't think anybody wants to. Purchase that and deal with that. So that's the hard part, so I. We don't have, so it makes zero sense for us to maintain. Half of it. If we're going out there anyways.
Exactly, do it, do it all or do it all.
And I understand it was a very nice gesture for Mr. Irving to say that you would do it for two years, but then we're right back in the same position potentially.
Yeah, believe, but I, I will say, uh, and I've got some other stuff I want to say with my, what he said, if you guys ever feel like you're interested in selling that. He'd be more happy to buy it, but he's not going to push the issue, okay? So consider it, but you know, I don't know what the cost difference is between maintaining and not, is it?
We had someone that was going to take on all of it, so we wouldn't go out there. That's one thing, but if we're going to go out there to do part of it. Then it's kind of a moot point.
And, and consider two is probably. One, if not the only plot of the street that we maintain like that.
No, we have another one south of the.
But it doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't look like this one. Is it mowed and?
Yeah, yeah, we keep it mowed, keep the ditch lined, trimmed. But the one at Northwest Eight isn't maintained at all. Correct. But we need the property for future development.
Yeah. You said there's some dead trees in there, well, at your guess, it's leisure time. Hour, whatever the case may be. Okay. Motion.
Yes.
Do you want to?
Yes.
Uh, I think we take Jim's recommendation.
Okay. Second?
My second.
Second, how do you vote, Patrick?
Yes.
Calvo.
Yes.
Dolly.
Would he still have the right to come in if Mr. Irving wanted to do both of those?
Yeah, I mean, you can always put a proposal together, I mean, just because we're saying he's going to maintain it, doesn't mean that he, you know, if he wanted to buy the whole thing. He could come up and say, hey, I want to do this, then we go back.
Then I would say yes.
Russell?
Based on that, I mean, I'll say yes.
Well, city budget this time of the public hearing, you receive any of that?
Dick, what's on the agenda? We want to buy picture of us.
Did you fill something out for this month?
He did, and I was on it. Uh, Greg and I.
Okay, I thought that was for last month. It's dated the twenty-fifth of April.
Well, Greg was supposed to put us on this. I just want to say that Jim's boy is doing a pretty good job. Mowing the lot and maintaining it. But I, I would really like to have a timetable on taking the trees down when I want to have, especially the one hanging over my gap. My propane barrel and my property, which is, it's a live tree, but it's got holes in it like this and across the limbs like that. You know where the water's going and you know what it's going to do. It's going to slip, it's going to fall. And then it's going to hit my propane barrel, he knows what's going to leave my house. So I'd kind of like to have it, then there's three other trees that are dying. Or one's completely dead. And others are dying and stuff, I'd like to have a timetable on having them taken down. And like I said, Greg said on the other end of that street, you know, he said if you ever have an interest in selling it, he'd be happy, but he's not going to push that. On the maintenance of it, like I said, the young guy that's doing, is doing a pretty good job mowing it. Uh, there's some bear spots in it that I'd like to seed it, and also I'd like to know who's responsible. When these guys come and work on the boxes for the internet. When they dig down, uh, in particular, they came and they dug down so a guy could sit there. And put his wires together, had to build a seat board, which is, I, we did it a million times in the. Job that I've been in, any electrical or anything, you gotta, usually you gotta put a shelter over the top of them so the stuff don't hit them. But they dug down and then they just kind of half. Pass, may I say, put the dirt back, there's a, like a bowl type situation and then there's the box. You know what's going to happen? Water is going to fill that up, but they don't rake it up, they don't smooth it down. And they don't seed it, so I'm just wondering, it's, whose responsibility is that?
That, it should be there.
There.
Yeah, it was, who's responsible for making sure they do?
Well, considering that, that's their utility and there's a right of way through there, I mean, I don't know if the city has any. Forceful hand.
Because, you know, this, this isn't happening just in my place. I see it all over town, town, and I think there are some. Said to these companies, you can come dig something out, you put it back and you seed it down, is that, if you come and take a look at it. But this is something that needs to be.
Totally understand.
Yeah.
To answer your question, Steve, you go back to, as far as the timeframe, I personally, I don't know Jim's schedule and his, his workers' schedule. To give you a timeframe on that to get them trees done, I'm going to have to lead that up to the office up here and Jim to give you that timeframe.
I'd like to get it when they figure that, and I would like the tree next to my property taken down first if they can do that. Cause that's the biggest threat and that is, that is a threat. Well, you guys look at, you see the huge holes in that. You don't water this, and it's been like that for a long time. The other ones, I mean, that's a way for me, it'd be nice to stand down, be easier for the kid to mow. So you wouldn't have to weeding near, near as much stuff. I don't think there's any trees back of Greg, in Greg's area that he wants taken down. It'd be nice to see it done, I mean, really particularly concerned about the one next to my property. So, you know, and like I said, my, my barrel and stuff was there before that tree grew up, and so I'm grandfathered in.
So I think Ash should get more on that. So I can go that, so.
You know, one other thing I'd like to say, and this is not my subject, is it's on the painting of the building. You guys might as well take your pit book and burn it. Cause you're breaking too. So that's just my opinion, that's why I designed for my planting zoning because, and. don't feel bad because I was on it about thirty years ago and the same thing happened, so.
Okay.
Thank you, Steve, appreciate you.
Okay, well, what, public hearing?
Huh?
This time of the public hearing, did you receive any?
I shouldn't either, why that?
Comments, concerns, if you're in the public?
Yeah.
Close, public hearing. Resolution number twenty-five oh nine, seeing permitting, insurance, everybody, just clear from June thirty, two thousand.
We don't consider that, we do, in May of each year. We don't make these tests, we make these tests, we're anything, just started. Who's a budget, who included in, was a term you were expecting. If you have any questions, I would be glad to answer it, no, we don't wish.
I'll move that.
Second?
Second, how do you go, Patrick?
Yes.
Oh, yes. Dolly?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Okay, thirteen, city engineer, Horace, again.
Hi, morning. Uh, Forrest Aldrich, Eastern Kim, uh, and if I could, I'd like to take these one at a time.
Okay.
That's okay. Um, first agenda item is a partial payment estimate to visual sewer. For this is for the sanitary sewer improvements, mostly on the south side of town. Now, this would be the final pay estimate, they completed the work, which we'll talk about in part B. And we recommend, uh, approval of that payment estimate.
Move the motion on A.
I'll move that.
Second?
Second, how do you go, Patrick?
Yes.
Calm?
Yes.
Dolly?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Okay, B?
So they've done all the work, like I said, uh, however, they submitted a final report and there's a couple. Uh, what they did is they lined the sewers, so they put a new liner inside the old clay sewers. So it's actually a, a fifty-year liner that goes in there to give a long life to those sanitary sewers. Uh, however, they're, and reviewing the reports and, and videos, um, if somebody watch a lot of videos. Uh, there were a couple areas that we saw some issues. And so, um, we haven't had a kind of a chance to talk to these with contractor yet, show these to Jim. So our recommendation, uh, from, uh, Eastern Kim and from Jim is to accept the project, uh, but not pay their retention or, or its acceptance contingent on these two issues being satisfactory, uh, addressed to Jim's satisfaction and Eastern Kim's satisfaction.
Is that just a belly in the paint?
Yeah, this one's.
It's just holding water?
It's just holding water, a little belly in the liner, we're not quite sure. We thought it, we wanna look at some pre, pre lining, maybe there's something going on there that, you know, they couldn't have, shouldn't have done anything about.
Sure.
Um, and then here, there's just a little wrinkle right here, it's, I mean, you keep in mind, this is eight inches, so we're talking a little, you know, going to something like this.
Right.
Um, and is that a that big a deal or not? We don't know, we, so we wanted to.
Is this in the same area?
No.
So in different, I was gonna say, maybe a product or something?
No, different parts of town.
Oh, okay.
Different sized pipes.
I will make the motion on what for, it's just then.
Okay. Okay.
I'll say.
Second, okay, how do you go, Patrick?
Yes.
Calm?
Yes.
Dolly?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Dave Seed?
So Seed is a totally different subject, so this has to do with the Wombles subdivision. And Sarah asked, did I bring bigger nicer than that?
Oh, we gotta say it was.
It's down.
What is in the budget to get Sarah a, what, a nice seventeen color printer?
Oh, that would be nothing.
So, um. All right, um, so this has to do with sidewalks. And what sidewalks we have out there, where do we wanna have sidewalks? And, uh, Seed brought this to our attention and, uh, we'll take them one at a time. So, uh, northeast Second Street, I can kinda see there on the upper side. So northeast Second Street is the east-west street, that's the existing one that goes out into the new addition. And we have that pond that we just talked, that detention basin we just talked about. Well, if you look, Tiven Way is the new north-south street coming off of White Pole Road. And where the barn is out there, they are going north, there are no lots platted at this time. Who knows when those will be platted, someday. Uh, so there's not going to be a sidewalk put in on the east side of Tiven Way for many years. And so the question came up, do we need to, again, assuming the detention basin stays with the lot, do we want to require that home builder to put in a sidewalk on the north side of Second that really doesn't go anywhere? Or is this something where we put a waiver to this sidewalk? And again, whenever council says, then that property owner of that lot would need to put it in at that homeowner's expense. Um, which right now, it would, it would go in, it would be part of, you know, just buying a lot and be part of the cost of the house. So it doesn't really go anywhere. And then we have the same kinda thing going on down on the north side of White Pole Road, uh, on the south side of those lots. And we did the same thing with waivers in Austin's. If you look at White Pole Road, there's no sidewalks along White Pole Road, uh, did the same thing. So it would be consistent to, uh, allow waivers there as well. So that's our recommendation for those three is to provide waivers for those. The one up on the north side of Second, could go either way with that. Um, so, so those are the first three. Then, uh, Seed is recommending that we actually put in a crosswalk. You know, cause we're gonna have sidewalk when these plots are built, we're gonna have a sidewalk in front of the two east lots. And we're gonna have a sidewalk along, you know, a whole length of the west side of Tiven Way. And if you look out at Foley, we put in a crosswalk, uh, to go across the street just on the north side of White Pole Road, or a cross street. Now, if you go down to Austin's Drive, we decided not to, cause there's nothing on the other side. So, could make sense to put a crosswalk in at this location. Now, our long-term plan shows for a new street to go in to, on the east side of that north, north lot on the east side, go between that lot and the barn, a new street someday. So, you know, unlike Foley, which goes, you know, the whole length all the way to Second before there's a crosswalk, there would be one just two lots north someday. That one I could go either way too, we've got precedence for it on Foley. Uh, we did not put the crosswalk in there as part of this. My thought would be is if the council, we've got a contingency, we could put this in. My thought would be is we hire somebody like Scott Concrete to do the work. Um, you know, they did a trail for us, took cul-de-sac, did a nice job with that. So if we wanna do that, uh, and then the last one, um, which Matt reminded me, thank you, I didn't forget. Um, is at the, not on the map, but clear at the north end of Barley. So that's the north-south road, clear at the east end. Uh, we have, uh, we hit the, the dead end and there's a gate right there. Seed suggested that we put in a crosswalk there at the gate. I'm not a big fan of that, that would be temporary, because if that street ever had extended, we'd want it. That's a putting in a mid-block crosswalk and I don't like those. Uh, because if traffic, people driving are not expecting a mid-block crosswalk and it could be a problem. But who knows when that street will be extended? Could have a mid-block crosswalk there, we have crosswalk, you know, just, that's the front of the lot on Tierden right there. So there's a way to cross. Industry standard is not to put those crosswalks in, you just get in the sidewalks and then whenever that gets extended, even if it's ten years from now or longer, you just keep on going. Uh, I showed Matt, kinda went, looked at some other subdivisions in other towns and, you know, that's, that's typically how it's done. But if council thinks that's important to have a crosswalk there, we could, we could do that. Like, cause some hours of Seed thought it'd be a good idea to do that. Um, so, just looking for, looking for thoughts from the council on sidewalk waivers for these, uh, three lots. The two on White Pole, the one on the north side of Second. And what your thoughts are on, uh, having Dave Scott give us a quote to put in crosswalks at, across Tiven down by White Pole and a crosswalk at the north end of Barley at the gate.
I, I'd agree with that, of course, um, my question would, and maybe the question wouldn't be directed to you, maybe more so Matt, but when people start, um, acquiring these, these properties, do we let them know upfront, hey, there's a waiver on this, so there could be potentially done a way that you might be forced to be, not really forced, I shouldn't say, but, but you're gonna have to put this in.
Yeah.
I think you're gonna put this in.
Oh, required.
Required. Required, put that in under their expense, so.
Based on prior real estate experience, yes, there is a document, I would go with the property that TS says that you want in future events, you would have to put in a sidewalk. Uh, but, uh, I was going through Zillow today and I seen some of those houses that were just built two years ago are already for sale. So now you have this paperwork that's going to fall under another owner, you know, forgotten about and is lost.
Well, but these, just like Quick Star and the Mid-American we talked about, these would be put together in court.
Yeah.
Right, okay.
I just, I just see future homeowners come up here to the council and just.
No, I would say the exact same thing if we don't. So, um, are any of those lots, have any of those been taken down here?
No, not any of those.
And where's, where's that crosswalk, you trying to meet the one down here?
Oh, it'll just go there, that's, this little box here is the barn.
Yep.
And so it'll already, south of the barn, you know, on with the future street. That's just a conceptual plan, which I think it makes sense, cause you're gonna want lots, uh, along the street that back up.
Right, and back here eventually.
There is parking on that side of the street permitted as well, of course. On the east, east side of Tiven Way, there is parking permitted on that side. Except in the, except in the, so you're gonna have the chance of somebody parking in front of your crosswalk. So Horace, my question, so for that north lot, what would be a ballpark of a sidewalk cost for that?
Gosh, let's see. So those are eighty-foot lots, so maybe you're talking, hundred and fifty foot, so a hundred and fifty.
Fourteen, fifteen hundred? Huh? Two thousand?
Hundred and fifty, I think a sidewalk is a foot.
Closer to three?
In this concrete, can you get it for one ninety now, one eighty?
Yeah, round it to two hundred.
You're using my cheat calculator for it, so, so how, how long did you say it was?
Say, twenty-sixty, say two hundred feet?
Two hundred? Is it a four-foot side?
Four-five.
Five. Four inch?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, twelve point three yards, so then you take.
Twenty-four hundred, twenty-nine, twenty-six hundred almost.
Double lap for later.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was gonna say double.
So, as you know, uh, you know, as a homeowner, buying that lot, I look at, oh, I don't need a sidewalk. Three years down the road, this dude comes back and says, five years from now, oh, that's now an eight-thousand-dollar sidewalk you gotta put in. I would not like that, I would almost say this lot, we require the sidewalk, we don't put the waiver in, cause chances of that requiring a sidewalk, sidewalk in the future could be more possible versus the ones on the outside.
Yeah.
So I would hate as a homeowner, buying that lot, five years down the road, you know, five, six, eight thousand dollar sidewalk, just go on down and come up with it, that's impossible.
Sorry, what, what did you say that?
Just as north, yes. I look at it from that perspective, as, you know.
And it gets rolled into the blanks for me.
Yeah, and it gets rolled into the house.
Side and see.
They don't look there.
Well, south one's really tough, because the school owns the whole property. Maybe I'm wrong on this, but is the school gonna put in a sidewalk through that entire ditch?
I would think that.
Along White Pole.
I would not think so. And, and that is why, you know, we have that trail coming from Austin's, from the west into the school property.
Right, so then.
And that's why we have.
The same route to school would be to go around the north side of the entire school that would come in.
Yeah, cause we have, we, you know, we.
And not have.
We got that property there in the middle of the plant, or second addition to come in from the school.
School too. I knew like where Greg was going out with that one there on northeast Second. Um, and, and it might be good for a, a, a little child to be riding a tricycle along, you know, something's against it of the road. You know, so I, I would agree with that, the, the south ones, I probably.
I, I like that.
Yeah.
What about the crosswalks at Barley and the crosswalks at?
I don't think the one up by the dead end, I, I wouldn't do that, just.
I wouldn't either.
Yeah. The one, the one down closer to the barn, you know, Jim brought up a good point, you know, something could be parking in front of that.
Well, this would be all the way down by Tiven Way, not by the barn. This, this would be down, this would be all the way, what I'm talking about is a crosswalk, crosswalk down here.
Oh.
I'm talking about.
Oh, down, down by White Pole.
Down by White Pole, yes.
Oh, I thought you were up to.
I'm just saying a future one's gonna come up there someday at the barn, but.
But, okay.
But no, I'm talking about now.
Cause you got two houses over there, you need some places to cross, I mean, I would be opposed to that.
Do, uh, do you see that being an issue just with the grade in the stop sign? I mean, I, you know, it's a downhill, is there any safety concern with that? Right before White Pole and also traffic turning into Tiven Way?
Man, you have something similar on Foley right now, it seems to be okay. There's a crosswalk on the north side of the ditch.
There is.
Yeah.
That, I mean, that one makes sense to me, but I, I'm just saying like, cause there's just a hill there and.
Yeah, there'll always be that.
But it's, but it's, it kinda flattens out as you come to the White Pole.
But yeah, and again, this goes back to how Greg was saying, until this park gets developed, if there's children or anything like that going to any of the schools and they have to walk or whatever, the safest route is to take around the north side of the school. So if they build those two lots there, technically they would want to cross the street.
Right, you wanna get them across to the other side and follow that side, walk all the way up, so.
Yeah, I mean, and like I said, in the future, there'd be that new street between the barn and the lot, so they could come up to the north and cross.
Right.
At that future intersection, but that.
But that could be.
It's years from now, yeah. I mean, the next development we wanna look at is continuing Tierden Trail before we do any right over here. So yeah, it could be years, years and years.
So if you need a motion, I'll make the, that, we do the waivers for the two sidewalks closest to White Pole. Uh, we do the crosswork, crosswalk at White Pole. We do the, uh, require the sidewalk up on northeast Second. And we forego the crosswalk at the dead end.
Yeah.
I'll second that.
All right, moving to Second, Patrick?
Yes.
Calm?
Yes.
Dolly?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Horace, I have to say real quick, safe route to school, my grandson was on that sidewalk last year and he fell on the scooter, broke up his arm. Oh, shoot. He was just going too fast. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, City Board Wages, I said they tabled this at the utility, the safety of this table. Okay, fifteen.
Oh, are we tabled? Okay, I'm sorry, I just, I didn't hear anything.
My app. Pardon me. Your application. I said that should've been in your packet, remember it though? Abby Duncan of Duncan Construction submitted a formal request of a five hundred thousand dollars in tax incentive financing to support the continued renovation of the historic First National Bank building, AKA Bonny Clagveen robbery building. The building's previous owner had an existing TIF development agreement in the amount of ninety seven thousand eight hundred seventy five and a one hundred thousand dollar community catalyst building remediation grant. They had asked about both of those before selling the building, and both of those, the TIF, so the bonding attorney was supposed to, they would be transferred if everything was the same, and the catalyst grant was also supposed to be transferable if everything was the same. The new building owner though had realized that in January, the community catalyst, community catalyst grant was canceled because of lack of communication. They were not in communication because they were going through buying process and couldn't get an opportunity to look up to their map enough, people were there to see. I spoke with Ash and Chip and could utilize the ninety seven thousand TIF that was transferable initially and then utilize TIF, one hundred thousand dollars in TIF from a prior agreement that was rescinded and put those funds, of course, the First National Bank building.
So are you saying we currently have two hundred thousand dollars in TIF sitting there to just, I mean?
Yes, that was previously out.
Go ahead, Ash.
We have a hundred, we need a credit.
Okay.
And then we're gonna give another hundred to the bank to take down.
Okay.
Chip and I will go over to the couple lives that twenty twenty nine difference that we have.
Okay.
And then contact the lender to, and everything is set to be go ahead if they're transferred.
I just go back to our meeting two weeks ago. Just.
It's the structure to, to start until twenty twenty nine. So the hundred that we have to be allocated, we won't be advancing, we'll begin from there.
Okay.
And then that will allow us to wait until twenty twenty nine, where we start to be the TIF back, and then we continue. So, we work it out between Chip and myself, man, to accommodate the restriction that we have now is the TIF. So that's kind of the relief, because we couldn't go with just two hundred to get our credit every year we can, based on the revision that we have. But Chip is scheduled the debt, we have, we will accommodate that the twenty twenty nine will kick in, we'll get a start to give someone, that's.
So when you say reschedule, I know, I know what you guys do from work, you know, a little. That, you're talking about refinancing that?
Yes.
The existing, okay, which is, I don't wanna get off topic on this part, you know, but I think we really, do we need an answer on this tonight?
And where you say?
I guess I just have some concerns with the council with this particular proposal. A couple of things, like Mike had mentioned a couple of weeks ago already having that budget, knowing that we have been overextended as a city within these financial parameters. But then also how this application has recently come in, but we have other TIF applications that have been in in the last year. I'm just gonna throw up, for instance, Dustin Capes had done a TIF application last year or so to renovate the Dwayne's place. Why aren't we considering those local investments into our downtown infrastructure before we are considering, looking at companies that are essentially in this proposal, they're coming in to renovate it for another rental space? I think Stewart has an ample amount of rental spaces currently for businesses. We've got Emerald Benefits, we've got Summit Grove, we've got the Depot available, we've got the Wallace Center, we've got the St. Center, we've got Janet Dixon's place now. Do we really need another rental space? If we're looking at office spaces, the entire clock tower is completely vacant right now. So are we really wanting to invest what little, if any, TIF funds that were already overextended to twenty twenty nine, I think is what was just mentioned, putting those funds into an outside company for more rental space? And that would be my concern, and I mean, I've had conversations with Matt recently, just in January, I've spoken with him and Brenda Dudley on doing some things daycare related because, I mean, we're packed to the rim, but even at that point, I was told, you know, there are no TIF funds, there's nothing until close to twenty thirty. So, I mean, really looking at the infrastructure that we have currently, and do we need to add something more like this? That's just my thought.
Excellent. For clarity, I don't have any other TIF applications we, that Dustin Caps rescinded his. Okay, so I do not have any other TIF applications in my file, okay? It's, so, but I wanna say though that the hundred thousand funds was being utilized from a prior applicant that just recently, within a couple of months, rescinded their TIF funds, or pulled back or withdrew their TIF.
They just, they, we got the funds for them.
Yes.
But they just didn't use them, they didn't draw, they didn't, okay.
Correct. So that's not involved.
So, so right now, is this something that has to be done tonight? Is it, I mean, are they, are they walking away, what are we doing here? The reason I ask that is because, and I appreciate you guys getting together with Chip and everybody, but we sat here and we had one alternative, I think, given to us at that meeting was to refinance, and I think we need to look at some other alternatives with this stuff with the state coming down. We had one very general meeting with Chip, it was very general.
We guys know what we're even gonna get, like, what's gonna happen with the state, and I know they, it was supposed to be done, and now they've moved it out, just financially, and I'm sure that is why the utilities tabled budgets.
And that's the only thing I'm saying is, you know, it's like, we can never guess what the state's gonna do, but I think we need more definite, you know, is restructuring, it's an option, I get that, not what I would like to do. Are there any other alternatives? I think there may be on that, we just haven't had that discussion, and I hope maybe we can work with Chip and maybe get something set up where we can really go over what our options are, you know, as far as maybe, because I think, I'm getting off topic and I don't want to, but this is bringing that up, you know, is that everything that we're doing, we kind of gotta weigh against what could happen at the State House. We gotta really weigh it, you know, and kind of think about it a little bit slower, so.
Well, even when we did our levy, we sent our levy, we talked about, so they're gonna be with Chip, we're gonna have to be, if you choose, potentially going forward until we hit that twenty twenty nine. I mean, I get refinancing and stuff like that, but that's harsh as hell.
I just hate to do that, you know, keep refinancing, refinancing, you know, if we have some funds where we could, you know, cover any potential shortfall, which I think there may be, need to be looking to that, can we table it? I mean, can we table this? Do, like, again, is this, this is it, this is a do or die, we gotta know tonight.
And is Chip going to, once they settle this, are we, are we looking at having another meeting, like a special meeting in two weeks?
I don't know about a special meeting, but we can table it, it's kind of, we're trying to do this since early, we go to December, so I'm occasion.
I think I can table this, because, because the whole thing is waiting for the state to do what you gotta do, and that stuff is gonna be by the end of this week, hopefully, I gather, but.
But this is already in our, this is, we're past the, put it in our urban renewal, right?
Yeah, this thing, I will give a brief explanation, if you excuse me, Matt, about it, we already have this, you know, with the Bonny Clagveen, the Russian people, and they just worked at solid to the new people.
Right.
I think Matt talked to them and we have a lot of interest in keeping Bonny Clagveen, you know, the stuff. So we're trying to see what we can do, and Matt reached that kind of mutual, we have about two hundred, which we have, which is a hundred, and we get the hundred if Chip will give us a way around it, and Chip did. And that's why we're coming, Matt's coming tonight to see if it's okay, we'll start to follow this the next day, which is send it to the lender to. And if you feel that you wanna wait, you can wait, I don't think from now until next month or in between, we have a special meeting.
We might.
We will be okay, I don't want you to feel like that has to be done to my.
And the only reason I'm asking that, because if this was that placeholder where we were just putting it into our urban renewal, like we did the Legion, where we said, hey, you're just doing it for a hundred thousand, this is starting to obligate us to do this, you know? That's my reasoning for asking for it to be tabled, this obligates us.
Maybe you know the answer to this, but for that community catalyst building remediation grant, could they reapply and get that, what is the timeframe on that?
I've tried.
I think it says that they're trying to do that.
I've tried, we just told no. Okay, but sent off another email, was compelling, and did not get a no.
Because that's essentially why we're trying to pack a hundred thousand TIF is to cover that cash flow.
Yes, trying to get that reinstated or emergency grant. It's not, I'm not giving any more action. Like we said before, I just told no, sent off some, an email, a compelling email, and didn't get a no.
And I think the city's in such a position that, A, we don't know what's gonna happen here in the next few weeks, and even if nothing does happen and that motion doesn't get carried this year, we know what's gonna probably happen at any point in the following years, but we seriously need to look at our TIF funding and completely pull back the reins on it and reevaluate that, where I don't think that extra hundred thousand should be granted, I mean, to some extent, I don't even think that we have the ability to pull back the current hundred that is allocated to pull that back, you know, I don't know how that works, but we're in such a spot that we seriously need to revamp, relook at that and, like I was just saying, even look at who is applying for this and try to be more favorable towards local persons, outside sources coming in, providing something that we've got ten times over already in the city. And I get, it's gonna help renovate that building, it's gonna provide life to it, but at what cost to the city? That's a huge cost, and right now, we need everything we can get.
Okay, you got anything else on Matt?
Thanks, Matt.
Thanks, Matt, I appreciate you bringing that up.
Submitted my report to you, you have any questions on any of that? Parking, or women's entrepreneurship, you know, it looked well? Okay, all right.
Thank you, man.
Thank you.
I guess I do have one quick question. Third addition says fifteen lots been obtained, five spec and seven custom, that's only twelve. Do we have any idea about the three or are those supposed to be one of those two numbers? Line item one.
Sorry about that, got a hurry there. There's fifteen lots, seven custom builds through one builder, and then there's three other builders that have custom built as well, in addition to their two specs that they're allowed. So there are seventeen lots, but one of the builders is backing out, who's drawing. Fifteen lots in total.
Excellent.
Okay, we did the first reading.
Sixteen years.
Fifteen coordinates, twenty five, oh, three C.
The second meeting?
Second.
I'll sign on.
Second, there you go. Patrick?
Yes.
Calvall?
Yes.
Dolly?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
You wanna stop there or you wanna do the third?
Let's stop there.
That's it, okay, we're good.
Okay, and then I had Sarah put in a packet, the management consulting, her price is what she has, and I have a question, has the guy who we hired come up with anybody for? Close to June.
How many, how long has he been with us exactly? Because I, trust me, you know, you might believe this differently, but I walk out of here and it's.
When did we see it last month?
But I mean, when did we, 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 like, two months ago, has it been two months or?
March.
So we're, okay, I'm two, okay, was it beginning of March?
March ten.
March ten, okay, so it's been two months, okay. And we said we were gonna look at about a ninety day period for it, so, okay.
We don't pay you.
But that's information from the other lady. We have to change directions.
This is just for information.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay, public forum.
Oh, you guys, this is my favorite.
How many people you get hired?
Zero. We were gonna discuss that, but we tabled that. I just wanted, I think that, and maybe I'm the only person in the whole city, I don't know, I'm not gonna speak for anybody else, just me, I just think that it's kind of interesting that, how many times did Chip stand up here and talk to you guys about what could be going on in the state? He's been talking about that since January, right? And then now, we're concerned about it, now we're worried about where is the TIF gonna be, now we're, oh my gosh, we have to do something about this, or we really need to consider this. I mean, I think that, and I'm not gonna, again, not speaking for anybody else, but that seems kind of frustrating to now we, oh shoot, well, maybe this is real, or whatever, you know, I think saying to Chip, give me more info, or whatever it was, you know, and how many other emails that were only between Chip and a couple people, you know, you talked about, you talked to Chip about the stuff with Matt and that kind of stuff, but what did he actually say? Because Chip's good at his job, right? So he can make it work, right? But did he say, this is what we should be doing? You know what I mean? And so those are the kind of things that, you know, he comes to you guys and he says, I've been doing this a long time, I know what's gonna happen, trust me on this, and then you guys are like, nah, we're just gonna keep going. And so, I don't know, that's kind of frustrating to me, especially like as a city employee to see, you know, the people in town trying to do stuff, and maybe they can't do stuff, you know, in the next few years, two, three, four years, somebody wants to renovate something, somebody wants to make something good to bring employees, more houses or something to the city, and then you gotta tell them no after he warned you that you could have done something differently. I don't know, I think that's kind of a, I don't know, my hope is, I guess with that, that we take a bigger interest in these professionals, these content experts that are coming in and making these suggestions, you know, of course, you guys get to make the final decision, but Chip's got a lot of knowledge and now we're all of a sudden realizing that he was maybe right, and then, you know, so, still I think about that.
All right. Thank you, Sean.
And I would just like to thank the council for taking the time to be thoughtful about this, because again. Because again, subject matter experts are important. But if you ever been to a doctor, sometimes you give a second opinion and you think it through because it's easy to refinance, that's an easy way, but maybe there's a different way. You know, and you gotta look at what's good for the city as a whole, not just for redevelopment or who's gonna be doing this and who's gonna be doing that. It's, it's the whole thing. And a lot of this stuff that Chip has brought to us, he's been concerned about for a while, but now it's even more real, you know, because early on in the year, it wasn't quite, we didn't exactly know what they were, they were gonna be doing. You know, and it's a little bit more real, so I appreciate you guys taking the time and, and considering everything tonight, you know? Instead of just knee-jerking stuff.
Thanks, sir.
I do have a question. Are you against the whole entire two hundred thousand on that TIF? I've got to figure out who's popular. Just, since the stones have moved on. And we are starting to say, not improve either of it or even interest in transferring still the ninety seven thousand from the blood order. I'd like to, I'd like to hear from the council. Are you looking, are you hoping to just do away with all of the two hundred thousand or you just have a hope to?
I think anything's up in the air at the, at the moment. I think everything is just, we're just taking a timeout. I feel that nobody said no or nobody said yes, we're just gonna table it till next month, what happens.
So you wanna bring the two hundred thousand back before you do again next month?
Yes.
Yeah. I just wanna know too, I know you guys said he restructured this, you know, and that restructuring is a refinancing?
No, no, no.
Is it?
No, I, I, no. Uh, do you have that nine thousand that he, the breakdown of the two hundred?
Right.
You don't know? Uh, he, what he did is like two hundred thousand on ten years, like twenty thousand every year. No, he made it like nine thousand, nine thousand, nine thousand, until we get to the year twenty twenty nine. And then he went back to make the difference. That's exactly, no, no, it's not, it's not, it's just that global, the two hundred thousand, instead of paying every year twenty thousand, we made it nine thousand every year and then we just, when he put in line, uh, after we made up the difference.
Okay, I see what you're saying. So something like that?
Yeah.
I would've felt more comfortable to see it in my package, you know? You know, exactly what's going on to see his, his breakdown of it.
Yeah.
Uh, so I get, I get what you're saying, you know?
Yeah.
But even, even so, even so, again, we've had one, every limited information we'll meet with him.
Yes.
On how we can solve his projected, uh, our, our deficits.
Yeah.
You know? I am not a fan of refinancing if we, if we don't have to, if, if, if we got other ways we can do it. But I think it behooves us as a council to sit down at some point with you and everybody, uh, Matt, whoever, and really focus on what our options are there and get that.
In my next month, we might have more answers and maybe Chip will be here to.
The simple answers we can always raise.
Walks.
So just, so might as well have another meeting, that you, you counseling one of, you competing with Chip and Ash and me again?
I don't think that's necessary. I just think that it, it could be or could not be a possibility and, I mean, that's, I think that's all we can give you at this time, to be honest with you.
I mean, it's, it's the state, I'm certain we work the state.
I'm just trying to figure out what to tell.
Tell them exactly what we just said.
I'm certainly working with the state and the direction they're gonna go with, with, you know, our ability to collect TIF and, and other funding. You know, that we are, not saying no, we're just saying, follow it. And I think that was our, our direction that we kind of agreed upon when we started talking about this was, you know, maybe we need to pump the brakes on stuff a little bit. Now, even though it does bring, and it renovates something, and get it. You know?
I don't, I just try to figure out, should I call them to stop with their plans, but okay.
It was tabled.
Thanks, okay.
Thank you, man.
Thank you.
I do have one more thing, Jake, to your, your question. Um, I, it's much more pleasant, so I want to thank you guys for, uh, your commitment to, we had six drivers uh, that went through EMT class and two of them have, all six of them passed their class, two of them have already, uh, passed their national registry and will be EMTs uh, as soon as the state gets them a license. We have two more testing, uh, within the next week, so we could have four or five more, um, EMTs on our roster within the next couple of months, so.
Cool.
Um, good job to them, they put a lot of effort into that and then thank you guys for, uh, making the investment in that, if you will, so.
Thank you.